...statement, Cheryl, would I tweet that?
Okay.
Oh, Cheryl.
Okay.
Commission of the Exeter West Greenwich Triangle School District is to empower students to contribute to school attendance by providing substantial learning experiences in a state, trusting, and motivating environment.
Thank you. Can we open a forum if there's anybody who wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda, you can do so now. Thank you. And then we have routine items, consent agenda.
I'd like to pull C. The bill.
Okay.
The items on the consent agenda are the regular minutes from January 10th, one appointment for a supervisor for our hockey games, and the monthly bills.
Oh, would you like to ask your question about the bills?
What is page three, and you have Jennifer Craftery, 1597, okay, can you translate, expand on that as... Page three.
Yep. We have, we do not have an occupational therapist on staff in the district, so we provide occupational therapy services through a contract organization, that is, the individual who provides those services and their services as indicated in a child's IEP.
Sorry, in what?
In a child's IEP.
Okay, so OT, PT, physical therapy, and occupation...
Correct.
...in kids.
Individual education, yeah.
All right. Maybe, could you help me out here and maybe just elaborate a little bit on these titles a little bit, so? It's OT, PC, part-time, overtime, I don't know what that means. Yeah, it's limited by the field of work, but we can work with this stuff. Something, so I'll ask some questions.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Motion.
I want to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I'm gonna make a motion that we move up item 5C for the policies review, the adoption amendment of 8301.
Send it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
We're moving up.
Just moving it up, huh?
Yep. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, any more to carry? Okay, let's go to policy 8301, the intent. And if you all have the latest version, that was sent by Rob in the email.
Policy 8301, student school attendance, this is something that I alluded to at the last meeting when we did the presentation on the importance of school attendance. In general, the changes to the policy are to expand on the definition of excused and unexcused absences for the purpose of recording those in our system, and then place a much heavier emphasis on the steps that we would take to intervene and support before we get to a point where a child is receiving a referral for truancy. So right now, what happens is, there's nothing, there's nothing required to have multiple steps in place before a child has accumulated a certain number of absences, at which point the truant officer sends a letter, and lots of parents are taken by surprise at that point. So we, in looking at the research and working with some, some experts in the field, working with administrators, administrators, and working with a group of teachers, particularly at the high school where a lot of this is really targeted, we've come up with some strategies where we will be providing some tiered interventions before a child gets to the point where there's a truancy petition that is filed. That's, that's one of the major focus areas of this policy, that's the addition on page We have also indicated the importance of looking at school attendance data so that we can identify when kids are showing up as being a risk so that we can intervene. Again, we want to make sure that we're catching them before we get to the point where there's a truancy court petition that's filed. And in terms of consequences, so this policy changes the consequences, A, consistent with the law, which says that we can no longer suspend a child for issues related directly to absenteeism, that was a law that was changed in the last round of the General Assembly. We are indicating also, consistent with our grading policy, that a punishment cannot be the assignment of a zero for missed work, which was something that was common in the past. And with respect to tardiness, right now, there are across-the-board consequences for all tardiness, this provides for some flexibility, meaning that there will be circumstances that arise, this gives three free passes per semester after that, then consequences can be put in place, and consequences may be differentiated. So for example, if a kid is one minute late to school versus an hour late to school, there's a difference there. So this gives some flexibility around the development of some reasonable sanctions that do not include suspension. Part of the reason why we've seen such a dramatic improvement in our suspension rate is because we no longer suspend based on issues that originate from issues of attendance. The, the section around the truant officer has changed because this suggests that before there is a referral, there's a requirement for either a phone conversation or face-to-face meeting between the principal and the parent. In cases where it's deemed appropriate for the truant officer to be in attendance, that can happen. In the past, the policy stated that the truant officer had to always be present at the meetings, it's not, it's not necessary 90% of the time. And again, the purpose here is to make sure that we're gathering information so that if there are reasons for a student's absence that we're not aware of, that it's one more step where we can collect information and we're not sending a child and a parent to truancy court just to find out that there's some very out-of-the-ordinary circumstance that gets brought up in court, and at that point, it's too late because referrals already been made. So I think this policy, in my opinion, changes our approach from a consequence-based system to a support-based system. Obviously, consequences are an important part of our process, but those consequences do not need to start with suspension and referral, they, they should start with support, intervention, and reversing the trend. Our goal is to get kids in school, and we know that when they're in school, they have a better chance of, of learning and a better chance of success, that was obvious in the presentation that we gave last week, at the last meeting. So those are really the majority of the changes, and I guess if there are questions, I can answer any questions.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So, excused absences, even if it accumulates, it's hit with sickness, is it always excused, or are we still worried if it gets up to 10 or more, even throughout the year?
Yeah, so, yes, we get worried, and when there are, particularly if, say we get to 10, or 12, or 15, or 18, and it's the third or fourth year in a row where that's happened, the reason why we intervene, why we want to have conversations, why we want to talk to the parents, is a lot of times, it's, it's a matter of access to supports, you know, what are the things that we can help the family with in terms of connecting them with community agencies and so forth? Again, rather than just doing nothing, we want to, we want to get information so that we can support. We know that it's, that it's a state law around compulsory attendance for students that are enrolled in kindergarten up through grade 12, and, and I also know, and this will be one of the presentations that comes up in the near future, that the Department of Ed is changing their system for providing report cards to schools, and it will no longer be based solely on state assessments, which is something that I'm really happy about. One of the variables that they are going to be included in that metric is chronic absentee rates for students and for teachers. So I think that this policy is pretty timely for us, and again, changes the focus from really just assigning consequences to what do we do as a school district to support students and encourage their attendance on a regular basis.
Well, I know that parents sometimes complain that they don't want to take their kids to the doctor when they have a fever because they just want to let it run out.
Yep.
So, I know there's protocol in place, those school nurses will say, "You have a fever, oh, everyone, we don't want to see you tomorrow."
Yep.
Is that considered excuse for the next day, or, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so, one of the things that this, we went back and forth on is how many absences can we just say are excused without going to a doctor, right?
Right.
And so that, we came up with three per semester for a total of six. Then if the nurse, like, my son, for example, had a fever and the nurse told him at his school that he cannot return until he's 48 hours fever-free, so that took two days, those were excused absences because they were directed by the nurse to not be in school.
That's right.
So, yes, and that, one of the changes that was made between the first draft that was in your packet and the draft that was emailed, is that something that we forgot to include, is the school nurse teacher excusing a child because that's the same as seeing a doctor, and that's, that's an excusable absence even when a student is in truancy court, but if the nurse excuses them, it's considered acceptable.
Can you explain the change in the Rylean law that this...
Yeah, so the Rylean law now specifically states that children cannot be suspended from school for reasons related to attendance violations. And I'll give you an example, yeah, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but here's what, here's what happened, and we're even guilty of it in our district. So we, a student is absent or is excessively tardy, because again, that's an attendance violation, and for whatever reason, they're assigned an after-school detention, that's the consequence, they're not being suspended, but they're, they have an after-school consequence. They don't show up to the after-school consequence, so they get suspended for not showing up to detention, and it's recorded as insubordination or whatever, whatever it's recorded as. Well, the, the policy, the law, the intent of the law is to get, get away from consequences like that, because yes, in reality, the suspensions for not showing up for detention, but the, but the detention was assigned for an attendance issue. So now, it kind of forces the, the issue with us, again, that they change the law because they want to see more kids in school, unless it's something that's violent or, you know, threatening the safety of, of students and staff. But it requires us now to think differently about how do we respond to students who are not coming to school on time, or not coming to school on a regular basis. We've done a lot of research, a lot of conversations, I know that the schools, Sue Chandler, the principal of the high school, has shared with me the draft that they're working on as a group, as a leadership team, around the tiered supports that they want to put in place to include one-on-one mentoring, like a staff member really takes on a student and to, to develop that relationship, to support that student around attendance, and a bunch of other things, positive incentives, rewards, that kind of stuff. So it's, it's a very different way of thinking than what we have typically done in Exeter West Greenwich. It is consistent with lots of the research and lots of the tools that are in that toolkit that I reference when I give the presentation at the last meeting, I think it's definitely a step in the right direction for our district.
Thank you.
If there's tiered intervention for positive reinforcement, or better way to say that, what is the reason for changing unexcused absentee definition, and why would it still not be a parent is completely the final say that said, "My child is staying home from school"?
So that, that kind of a concern is probably not typical, I mean, for the most part, we don't have kids that have six or more absences where the parent called and there's not a doctor's note. However, as I showed in the presentation, our, our average daily attendance is roughly 95%, but we do have a group of kids that are chronically absent. So if we look at the chronically absent children, they are kids that are absent, there's a parent call every time they're out, and it's year after year after year of 15, 20, 25, 30 absences, and that's not okay. So it doesn't really change anything except for the way that it's recorded, and, but it sends the message that it's really important for a child to be in school, it's not okay for a kid to constantly be excused.
But it also sends the message that the parent isn't good enough and they have to have a doctor, a dentist, or whoever. I, and, there's been lots of contact to me over the weekend in regards to this, and it's an issue with a lot of parents that this is proposed to change like this, and I personally absolutely disagree with it. I don't think that particular section should be changed whatsoever for more than one reason. The doctors' offices themselves are going to give you a note whether you're healthy, whether you're anything, if you walk in there and ask for one, you're gonna get it anyway, but then now you're backlogging the doctors, the co-payments, the financial side of it, that kind of thing. So it's, I know many doctors that feel this kind of rule is... So why would that, why would you not just leave it that the parent gets to make that decision and make it that you get a cutoff of only three? If you're saying we only have this section, why does every, why doesn't we need a rule to say now there's a cutoff?
I'm not really quite sure I understand really the complete concern, but our policy is actually far more flexible than lots of the ones that we reviewed because we have six in the course of a year where it's allowed for a student to be absent without a note. Again, you know, nine out of 10 or more of the parents, this isn't even something that will ever come up because kids are not absent that frequently. It sends the message that it's not okay, it's unexcused. But it doesn't mean that as soon as an unexcused absence gets recorded, that automatically it goes to a level where there are consequences in truancy court referrals, I mean, there's a lot of steps along the way that the school would have to go through before we ever got to that point. But right now, we have, we have quite a few students who have in excess of 18, 20, 25 parent calls.
I guess the wrong point was, if there's tiers going into place, why would there not be time to let those tiers improve a situation before making a change in this particular section that goes across the board for everyone due to a small section? Why would the tiered portion of reinforcement and positive things not be played out to see if that has positive results prior to making something that says, "Now you only have three times that you can excuse this semester"?
So let me just, let me just remind everybody that there is a state law requiring attendance in school every day that schools in session, and we have to have a policy that encourages that, and we do not want to give the, the impression that it's okay for there to just be a phone call time after time after time, certainly that's going to come up, but if a kid has seven, it doesn't automatically get to a stage where there's automatic consequences that are assigned, it's just a way for us to kind of track when kids are absent, how frequently they're absent, if they've exceeded the three in a semester. So I don't, I'm not really seeing my issue...
I guess I just don't see how changing the policy changes the tracking, like you're still, you can still track it regardless, whether it's a parent note or it's a doctor's note, I'm just very, very, very adamant about a parent trumps always, and so there's no way, I know with my kid, but he didn't need to go to school eight, nine, or 10 times as long as he's passing his classes, and I write that note that says, "He's home with me because I feel this is a necessity for his health for the day," I, I just don't agree that it requires after a three-day...
The only issue that I see with that is state laws that he has to attend school 180 days in a year, and as a parent, we're supposed to follow those laws. So we have, as a school district, we have to have policies that support those laws.
And I'm just saying, I think the way the policy is written is appropriate. In that section, in that section, I don't think that section should change.
But the last sentence, it says that the administration may excuse absences for other situations as a procedure, so there's a lot, I think there's a lot of flexibility there.
There is flexibility.
I disagree, let me tell you why, I've been on the receiving end of divorce, and I know how schools cut out guardians and parents. In this case, I agree that it's the parent's sole responsibility to see that their child attends school, not a doctor, not a lawyer, it's solely the responsibility.
I'm listening to you, so far, I know we're here on with this.
And it's solely the responsibility of the parent, I hate to see any parent compromised or who, you know, and I, I don't see the necessity to have mentioned in this policy physicians' contact. Obviously, you know, you want to go out there, you want to go above and beyond parents. If you need to bring a parent, you can set up a meeting, bring parents in, that's fine, that's where it begins and ends. Or less, of course, the child is in jeopardy, and then I think that's another, that's another issue, if you're talking about attendance. War that the kid should attend 180 days about the kid's sake, there's no war, he doesn't have to make up that, that time that he's lost when he's still old. I mean, I'm sure the law, if I were a physician, encouraged that they attend 180 days. We don't have teachers, teachers are up 15 days a year on average in the state of Rhode Island, I don't see us going to doctors asking for them to, to see what their attendance records are, but I also have another point.
We have a policy for that.
What is that?
We have a policy for that for teachers.
Okay. Anyway, when it comes to tardiness, what concerns me about the tardiness is, is that if a child, yeah, kids that come in from the Connecticut line, I mean, when they're sophomore, junior, senior, they start driving, they're coming in from the Connecticut line. Weather conditions, I can see very easily where they could be late five, 10 minutes for the first period, and if they get out of this, three passes per semester, which is 190 days, very easily, simply because they're late. And as a consequence of that being late, they now are going to detention. Now, I for one think that because of our vast size, we are a very large school system, to, it makes sense for a kid, if a kid's gonna be late, he might as well not go to school during tardiness, right? Because, hey, he's not gonna have to go to detention, he'll just get an absentee, "Dad, Mom or Dad, you know what, I'm gonna be 10 minutes late here for first period, it's all, why don't we just call it a day right now and I won't have to go and go to detention because this is my third or fourth day, and it is the winter and hey, it's slippery, it's fire, and, and not only that, I don't think the kid should be, who's just learning how to drive, be under pressure to drive to school. There have been accidents, as for kids, during the winter months trying to get to school in this district. So as far as being late for first period, I don't agree, and this, this whole issue here where you're gonna go, give them three passes, 90 days, come on, I'm not gonna go to this much.
Okay. So, I just want to say a little something, because I worked a lot on this policy, this general policy, something, right? The policy itself as a whole is a proactive approach to curtail the negative impacts of absenteeism, and I think you have to look at the policy as a whole. It provides a lot of flexibility, which we don't have in place now, it provides supports we don't have in place now, it has principles, the system principles, tracking absenteeism, so before it becomes a problem, they're calling parents, so they're engaging parents in open communication. There's so many positives in this policy, so I kind of think, there's a few small things that are getting a knock on, that even, even the, the absenteeism, when the parent calls in, there's still, there's a phone call to a parent, what's going on, is there anything they can help with? There's things that are being put in place with this policy that aren't occurring right now, it's a positive policy. I, I don't see anything I can improve.
Well, it also has the option that prior to voting, it could be redrafted with just particular sections changed to, or you could delay, we don't have to make it a final excuse.
Here, a child with policy isn't even going to truancy court until there's been a conversation with a parent prior to even getting to the point of where there's a problem. There's the supports in place, there's engaging the child with the parent, there's so many things happening before we, the child's not going to go to truancy court, everything's been exhausted. It's such a positive policy to engage students in learning, so I don't, I just don't see any negatives, but I've had enough talking, can we about that make a statement?
Well, the latest, did you not say it was not going to be punished as it's now?
Yes, so right now, under the current policy and protocols, the, a child who is late gets a consequence every time that they're late.
But you're changing that.
So there's three free passes for no reasons each semester, and then there are circumstances where the, a tardy would be excused. So, for example, we've talked about, it's snowing outside, and, you know, we would just do a blanket wave of, well, tardies are excused on that day because we need to be reasonable, and I think that's what most schools do.
The bus is late, the bus is excused.
There's reasons that are logical, common sense reasons where we would, we would say that they're, they're excused, right? And so the flexibility that, that those kinds of things can be excused by the administrator, and we, we try to think of as many, as many of the circumstances as possible, but what we came up with was, we can make an exhaustive list, and then something's gonna happen tomorrow, so we wish we'd have included that, so we kind of made it a little bit broader, because again, the goal, and I think the old policy was very consequence, punishment-oriented, and our goal in engaging in this conversation is to change the whole attitude of the policy so that we are reasonable, supportive, and preventative. I don't want us to have tons and tons of families going to a referral to truancy court to find out that there were things that we should have known months and months ago. So how do we make sure that that happens? We build in the tiers of support, that's what we've spent months talking about in the district. It took a lot of work to get, I will say it, particularly at the high school, a lot of work to get people to this place, because this is not the way that they think typically, and that is common of secondary schools, hate to say it, I'm a product of that myself. So, you know, I, I'm really proud of the work that, that the people did in this district, and this is a policy that, you know, sometimes we write policies from, from central office. In this case, we wrote a policy with input from state, administrators, teachers, because we wanted to have buy-in, it is such a significant change, it's a whole cultural shift, punishment to support, and in order to get that buy-in, they need to be involved in the process, and I, I am afraid that if we, if we dismantle the policy as it's written, and I really do think it's a good policy and represents very positive... think it's a good policy and, and represents very positive changes, that the, the implications could be, could be significant, meaning that we wouldn't have the buy-in of the people that worked hard to get to this point, in my opinion.
And, and just, I'm not going to read the entire law, but 1619-1, ten is required, the first sentence. Every child who's completed or will have completed six years of life on or before September 1st of any school year or is enrolled in kindergarten and has not completed 18 years of life shall regularly attend some public day school during all the days and hours that the public schools are in session in the city or town in which the child resides. And it goes on to be, there's some pretty hefty punishments in there for the parents who are not following the rules. And then it does get into what specifically is acceptable or excusable. So I think this policy is in accordance with that.
I think this policy is a lot better than the others. A lot better, a lot better for the students and for the parents because maybe they don't know, the kids are not going to just go, you never know.
We've had that too, where we get to the point where there's like significant consequences or truancy court referral and the parent, what is not aware that the problem was as bad as, as it really was. So again, how do we make sure that we never get to that point where surprising a family and a child with something that's significant? You got to get involved early. And you get involved early by paying attention to it. And that's what we're attempting to do through this policy.
A question and a couple comments. So if family members, members of the Scientology religion or if, as Amy suggests, you know, finances could be an issue, whether or not they have medical coverage and doctor's visits and co-chairs, are those the kind of things that, you know, you'd be discovering during this process if there's repeated absences and parents contacted or you hope contacted? I know that there's privacy issues, I, I understand that they may not be that willing to share, but it's important for the school to understand the basis of the absence and assistive we can.
Yes.
And, and so is that where your discretion comes in with reference?
Yep.
What if the child is not helping? And therefore they don't have a ready decision?
Right. That's, that's, yeah. And that's, you know, I mean, not to get, not to get too much into the families business, but to assist where we can.
I think the states run their families business all the time.
But, you know, with the presentation about the dropout rate at the last meeting, the comment that I made was that we need to have some ownership and responsibility as to what we will do to effect change. And I, I think that, you know, this is definitely a multi-stepped ladder, but this is part of it is making clear what our expectations are in alignment with state law and also, you know, to, to afford more dialogue instead of punishment. And, and I think it's really critical, you know, when you think about students who do drop out, I think it's very often a case of one small thing leads to a bigger thing leads to a devastating thing and something that is difficult to turn back from. And I think when there are punishments like detention for, you know, tardiness and absenteeism where we may not know the real reason and the other issues that that student might be facing, I think that's one of those bad things that could lead to, you know, you, you talk about the consequences that, you know, that its coordination might get involved and, and you've got a suspension involved where a dialogue would have prevented a lot of that. So I think this is an important step in, in our efforts and our responsibility in reducing not only the absenteeism and the tardy rates, but also, you know, the dropout rate in the overall picture.
Good, okay. We're going to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept policy 83-01. Has been.
Your second. Second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A vote. And have attention. Robbie Elson. For the, for the tiered supports and for the guidelines and the policy, could you just put those in one of our packets and let them know so we know what they are?
Oh, yes, yep.
Thank you.
So that, that request was when the schools developed the tiered supports and the guidelines that I put them in the packet so that you can see what the schools have come up with for their, their supports and interventions.
Just so we know.
Yeah, that's good.
My bearings here. Okay, we're at correspondence. Let's see, we have the communication about the football team and policy's up to 8 minutes. Any questions on any correspondence?
On the football? So if, I got a question on the logistics piece of this. So we're interested in teaming with that private school.
Proud.
Yeah. And I think we do this already for hockey.
Yes, correct. We're like, oh, we're.
And how does that transportation issue get worked out? Bus, how does that work out? Kids are in X, Y, Z school. I mean, here, if they're going to attend a hockey game, do they not all descend out of the school and the bus goes or something? Is that how that works?
No. There's more.
Well, wait a minute, now hockey is not a sanctioned.
It's not a funded.
Not a funded.
It's not funded. So how is it, now football would be, how does that work and feel on this?
So there's no guarantee that, that the proposal would be accepted at this point. But I know that our athletic director has had some conversations with the gentleman that's in charge of athletics at Proud. And both of our programs have relatively small numbers, so this is a way for us to guarantee that we would have a team. And so a home game, in, in hockey, it's different because there are only so many places that have ranks. A home game for Exeter, West Greenwich, West Woolworth is always at West Woolworth. So our kids have to go there always. A home game for a co-op football team could take place on our field and it could take place at Proud. And an away game would, would obviously be wherever the away game is scheduled.
Practices by these week, no doubt, for football.
Yep. So again, there's no guarantee that it would, that it's going to happen. But I think Proud has the smaller teams and the chances are, if this gets approved, then we need to look at all of the details because, because it's not final until all the details are worked out. But I think what would happen is practices would be here, Proud would use their van to transport the children over, they would just join our kids on the field here for practice. Home games would either take place on our field or Proud field. Away games, you know, they would take place at the other school and we would provide transportation for the, for the games. It may be a couple of extra bus runs for the home games that take place at Proud because we would have to take our kids during a home game from this school to Proud. But other than that, everything else is budgeted.
And how many kids get to stay in football this year?
We had, I think it's in here.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, we had seven in grade 10, eight in grade 11, nine in grade 12, and Proud has two per grade level. So.
We're hoping you get two.
Two per grade level. So that's why I mean when we have practices that there's six kids or so would hop in the van and just join our team here.
And, I mean, I want to ask my father set of questions at this point, so it's, you know, it's going to take a while.
We haven't heard anything, but I figured that it was something that you should just be aware is being investigated at this point so that we can maintain a football program.
Safely.
Safely.
Okay, the 2016-17 budget projection.
Projections enclosed. You can see in this projection that we have the unassigned general fund balance that was a result of our completed audit of not having that 5,821 and our projected operating balance of 167, 446. Questions? Who are you looking?
This page. No.
So this is dated, do you have any questions? Okay, wait a minute. So tomorrow we have the budget workshop and at that point, we're going to get into a lot more specific detail about where we are. However, I thought that I would give you a, a general overview so you know what to expect for tomorrow. And I know you have this handout in the packet. And I do have a little bit to add to this based on some information that we received this afternoon. This sheet is what I have already gone over with the committee. This was part of the initial draft. And then we did a reference for a straight 4% increase. And what if we limited the increase so that West Greenwich would be at 4%? Because West Greenwich also had a population shift, so Exeter would be a smaller percentage. What I wanted to do is just give an overview about the progress that we have made since the, the meeting that was held two weeks ago. If nothing else changed, we knew that if this was our target, because this is, this represents the, this represents what, the minimum that we have to cut so that we get both towns to 4%, okay? In order for that to happen, obviously cutting a million dollars is pretty significant. As of 125, so in the two-week timeframe between meetings, we've cut 408,478, which would leave us with 527,990 left to cut. And I will go over in detail what those cuts look like at the workshop tomorrow and all the administrators will be present as well. That 527,990 is broken down into staffing and non-staffing reductions. And it's roughly half, half and half, 217, 243 in staff, 191, 235 in non-staffing. So again, lots of detail tomorrow. But also tomorrow, I'm going to, we, we got the governor's budget on Thursday. We know that she presented her budget and it provided some information about the funding formula and, and group home aid. Those were the two things that were in those numbers that were passed out by the, the school committee organization, right? Those numbers matched what we used for budgeting purposes perfectly. What the governor's budget did not do, and it never does, is outline district by district the impact on categorical aid. So all those other revenue sources, the transportation, regional transportation, non-public transportation, high-cost special ed, ELL, students that was added in last year. So all of those things we didn't know. What we knew was that she budgeted for the increase in high-cost special ed and she did not budget for increases in transportation aid. And RIDE had indicated to us to use their numbers, and I actually took a screenshot of the RIDE page saying, "This is what you should use for budget purposes." And you'll be able to see that those numbers are exactly what I use for budget purposes. And as a result of the governor's release, we knew that we probably were not getting the transportation aid, okay? Late this afternoon, just before I walked into the ad staff meeting, our monthly ad staff meeting, the RIDE website had the new categorical breakdown posted. So I printed it out and I started to take a look at where we stand. And in general, and again, I'll go through the numbers, but we have lost approximately a quarter of a million dollars off of our original initial draft. So I used everything that RIDE said to use for, for budgeting purposes. And now that we've released, now that we have everything released to us, I'm able to compare and we're 225 to 200, I forgot the exact number, but I'm still working on it. I just got the numbers today. That means that, you know, a, a day ago, we were thinking that we have about a half a million left to cut. Now we're at three quarters of a million. So we did all this work, we cut roughly 400,000 and now we put 250,000 back in. So our, our work is, it's a little demoralizing. This is a horrible financial picture. And I, I thought it was going to be a struggle to get to this point, but to cut another three quarters of a million dollars will be, I, I think, pretty close to impossible. We're going to, we're going to do everything that we can, but I'm, I'm not feeling too good about it. But tomorrow, I'll give you the exact numbers. Again, I'll tell you that you all know that the, the governor released our budget on Thursday and that Tim Duffy sent something out to school committee members. I got a copy of it. I gathered the information from that. I kept checking the RIDE website because it's the categorical aid that I was most interested in seeing and that came in this afternoon. The result is about, about a quarter of a million more off of what we were using for projections. So we got hit very hard in this budget cycle. With state aid reductions, with healthcare increases, it, it's a, it's going to be devastating. So more to come tomorrow, but that's, that's our current status. We have actually been working very hard on getting the number down and, you know, 400,000 in a couple of weeks, I thought was pretty good, but adding 250 back in doesn't make it look so good anymore.
Got a question?
Sure.
So most of our increases were due to basically contractual requirements, but the thing that stood out was the healthcare increase of a million dollars over a year. And then Bob made a comment that kind of stuck in my mind. And, and we're self-insured, right? So they come back to us and they say, "Hey, we need this big pot of money," right? So correct me as I go along here, Bob. Did you suggest that we could see an additional, so, so for example, I assume we're still positive in the pot when it comes down? Because one year we weren't, or there was a year way, way back, right? So we borrowed this then. Are we positive within that now?
So right now, our cash reserve at WB, I've been told we can't hear us in the audience. Our cash reserve at WB is just under a million dollars. We are, our claims are exceeding our premium at a rate of about $80,000 a month.
Now?
Current. So when we started this year, we had just under a million in the reserve. So on July 1, a million in the reserve at the WB. Our claims are exceeding, so do 80 times 10, that's 800,000, so. And the claims haven't tapered. They've leveled, but they haven't.
So, so I, I just see this, this flame a year from now. So you're saying by the end of this year, our pot of gold will be zero?
Has the tangent zero, yes.
So if, so, and, and, so it's zero at the end of the year. And our premium increase, we asked for. And our premium increase, we ask for for next year an additional million dollars. That won't use us, it just gives us zero to start the fiscal year, right?
No, we're going to, well, we're going to use up our million. And the, and the claims experience, consistent with the size of our group, should not be as high as this. We have several claims, significant claims, that typically would not last as long as they have.
Whatever, sure. Nothing's changed these days. But I guess my question is, we're exceeding our premium by eighty thousand dollars a month?
Correct.
Right. That draws on the million dollars that we had in reserve going into the year, right?
Correct.
And you're suggesting eighty times twelve, right? Not ten, but eighty times twelve. We're probably looking at zero at the beginning of the next fiscal year?
Correct. So we're running roughly between thirty and forty percent higher, correct? Than our actual, than our premium?
Okay, so what points?
So, so to recoup that, we would be looking at a thirty to forty percent increase in healthcare costs.
What is our current complete premium today?
About two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars a month.
That's what we pay?
Correct.
And you're asking for an additional, whatever that million dollars, an additional eighty thousand dollars? That probably didn't come out of your head. You're saying yourself, well, that's our target today, so that's where I came up with a million dollars. Or they told me I needed an additional million dollars, correct?
You said a lot there.
That's what they tell you.
If, if our premium is two, in round numbers, two ninety-seven,
Yep.
we're spending about three seventy-eight.
But you're asking for an additional million dollars, right?
Not this year.
For seventeen eighteen?
Correct.
You're asking for an additional million dollars for healthcare over the course of a year, which is almost eighty thousand dollars a month for premium?
Correct.
So that's three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a month for premiums?
Correct.
Now, you said one other thing, you said, what about the following year? That's what tipped my interest. What do you expect for the following year's budget?
My, I've done a, as required by law, I have done a forecast. And the number I used for two thousand and nineteen was a seventeen percent increase.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
What does that mean in terms of dollars over the course of a year, seventeen percent? You're saying seventeen percent on top of the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a month?
Correct.
So that'd be about another forty thousand dollars?
You know, a little more than that, maybe?
Fifty thousand?
So, at three, at three, at three sixty, ten percent would be thirty-six thousand, seven percent. So you're looking at another seventy thousand, so you're looking about another seven hundred to eight hundred thousand.
A year. So our healthcare costs over the course of two years, you expect them to go up two million dollars?
They could. My heartfelt desire is that during two thousand and eighteen, our trend, we bend the trend, and we stop exceeding the claims. We have excessive claims right now.
Sorry, how do you do that in two sentences? It's actually sixty-four thousand.
The, the typical healthcare trends are seven years of a dip, two years of a rise, followed by seven years of a dip.
But demographically, I hate to use that word, we're a very old-employed-y kind of business.
But changing significantly. At the rate of, no, I'm being serious. At the rate of two hundred employees, six retirements, or five retirements average a year? And now, we're getting younger, we're not getting older, we're getting younger.
Do they not participate in our health system after retirement?
One of the threats to the district are...
What did you say, threats or threats?
One of the threats. Come in as a first step, under mom and dad's healthcare, work for two years, transition to their own healthcare, individual, get married, have kids, family healthcare. The swing is a fifteen hundred dollar pay, a fifteen hundred dollar buyback when you come in as a step one, just out of college. And within three years, you'd be looking at a nineteen thousand dollar healthcare plan for somebody who gets married and decides to have kids. And that's what we're seeing, beginning to happen. Because we're hiring younger, you know, the workforce is going to get younger here.
Well, it did sound like it was going to get better if they were going to get younger. It sounded like they're going to participate more because they're going to have family, they're going to have kids. Where...
There's a beautiful thing about youth, they're healthy. Remember those days?
I appreciate that, but frankly and honestly, I mean, healthcare, just ordinary cost? Eh, maybe a little too ish for Bob, but all right, that's my next one. I just wanted to make sure I heard the second part, the next fiscal year. You think we're going to look at another million dollars? So two million dollars?
That's our forecast, but we'll have this discussion next year. And it is my heartfelt hope that we will be in a better position. I mean, this is, this is bad. I have not seen it this bad.
Oh, no, there was one year when we were in the tank of seven seventy-four. Do you remember that?
Yeah, but it was not to this magnitude.
No, no, we owed seven hundred and seventy-four thousand.
No, it was...
That was...
It was, it was two hundred and forty-one thousand. And our rates at that time were significantly less. And the increase to get out of that was significantly lower.
So what you're saying, okay, so you're saying that our premiums the following year basically erase that deficit situation?
It took two years, it took about eighteen months to get out of that.
But we're going to be at zero, the way projections were come July first?
Well, it's not entirely true, though, because the premiums also maintain a certain reserve.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, I thought, I thought he was saying that we're spending eighty thousand dollars more than our...
We, we are, but that's also to maintain a required reserve with, I don't know, the million, but it's a required reserve.
I thought you said we had a million dollars.
We currently have, but whether, I don't know what the minimum is.
Sorry, that's too many dollars.
I'll bet it's single-digit for nineteen.
Any other questions, John?
I think we'll discuss this enough tomorrow. Maybe July, it'll be a couple of months. It certainly, it certainly brings attention to this thirty million dollars in free tuition that the governor wants to promote for reliable students when they're taking all this money away from the current school districts. Because looking at the budget, the only school districts in the state that they're getting more money from Providence, Grand, Denny, Warwick, and Soccio. Everybody else, everybody else is paying freight, so.
Barron.
Barron.
Oh, yeah, Barron, Barron got hit too. Well, their formula was positive over the course of seven years. And that was because they, they were getting family income and as defined by a household taxes, which bothers me because the one person that lives that supports the family in Barron, the equivalent in Exeter supported it too. Mom and dad both were.
Yeah, right.
The case in Barron.
Correct. You're absolutely right, I just heard, well, your dad's a B-sprayer.
Right, and their aid formula went up. They got more aid over the course of seven years, as Oz got hit.
Yeah, you, I, yeah, you're right, I've got to... No, I appreciate you.
No, I, that really kind of chucked me, and I'm like, boy, they get a good lawyer, a good reveler in Barron. Always do that, thank you, Bobby.
Okay, the monthly subcommittee reports we have. All right, we have new business. We have a junior high school participation in the department, health youth risk behavior survey.
This is a junior senior high school. This is a survey that our district did participate in last year. We, we don't authorize the use of surveys unless they get school committee approval. What I have included for you is the background information about the survey, the purpose of the survey, a fact sheet. I also have the sample questions, which I provided last year, and the parent opt-out clause. And also, I, I'm really wanting to just go back. Yes, so we have the survey results from two thousand and sixteen, where, again, our schools participated, junior and senior high school. Just provides us some information around risk behaviors. It helps with identifying some interventions and supports at the local and state level. But you can see based on the results that there are some definite concerns that we need to pay attention to. I'm not sure if there are any questions. It's really the same kind of a survey as what we did last year. And based on conversation and the requests, I think I provided everything that I could anticipate that you would want to see.
Any questions?
Just send a back-end note, we'll do it for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Because I picked it very, very hard.
Last year, I was walking around, people are away, I don't know, I just don't trust them.
I haven't actually seen who gets to take the survey, but...
Very different question, it's very small, but the, this statement of whatever it is, five hundred dollars, that is per school, so it could be five hundred for senior or five hundred for general?
Correct. And they used, last year when they got that money, we, you know, it went right to the schools. And they used it for like anti-bullying and different kinds of presentations that they did, pre-prom presentation, those kinds of things that we do every year. So that was put into the fund to support those kinds of intervention programs for the junior schools. No, 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 seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that was it, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay, everybody's good? You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve WG junior senior high school participation in the Department of Health Youth Risk Behavior Survey two thousand and seventeen.
I'll say it. Okay, thank you for the discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. All right. And we have the capital fund balance discussion.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
So this is, this is a presentation that we've given a number of times in the past. But last week, we, me, Bob, and Tish, the district treasurer, worked on updating this so that we can have a clear understanding of where we sit with respect to our fund balances, our assigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance, what we've committed, what we've assigned, so forth, consistent with policy. So the way that we broke this down is to look at FY sixteen, FY seventeen, current year, and FY eighteen, next year. Okay? And this took us a long time, so Bob, if I mess anything up, just feel free to jump right in. We have not approved the June thirtieth audit at this point, June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen audit. But we do know that the figure that is on that audit report, we'll be coming to school committee in February, the figure that currently sits on that audit report is nine hundred and ninety-five thousand eight twenty-one. So we're looking at school committee approval on the twenty-eighth, that's when the auditor will be present. In FY sixteen, there were two assignments that were made. And those assignments are actually, even though they were made in FY sixteen, they are actually showing up on our expense reports. Because the money is being expended in the current fiscal year. So we've assigned it, but they're showing up in our fiscal, in our monthly fiscal reports, which means that we, we have to kind of account for the fact that that three hundred and five thousand dollars that was assigned in FY sixteen is, we need to look at that as, as part of our fund balance. And then, then the monthly report will be drawing from that three hundred and five thousand, right? The band equipment, we remember, was a hundred and five thousand dollars. Again, all of that has been purchased in FY seventeen this year. And all of those expenses are showing up on your monthly reports that Bob produces. And then the GASPY fifty-four assignment was the healthcare. So we knew in June of two thousand and sixteen, the last school committee meeting in June, when they hit us with a seven percent increase in our healthcare rate for the current fiscal year, we, we knew that we were going to be short because the budget had already passed. We were going through all, the entire process, and then we got hit with this increase. So we made an assignment to cover that seven percent added cost, which is about two hundred thousand dollars. Again, those expenses are in FY seventeen, they're hitting the monthly reports. So it's going to look like in our monthly reports, we're drawing more money out. But we actually have assigned three hundred and five thousand dollars on top of what the town approved. So at the end of the day, our, our balance would be a little bit higher. Remember, we got a lot more money from the state last year after the fact as well. So, in FY seventeen, if we look at the beginning balance, the unassigned fund balance, plus band, plus healthcare, that adds up to just over one point three million. We are not, we do not have any sources where we can pull money in. So one of the places that we would look would be, for example, the WB. But we're using about seventy-eight thousand dollars a month right now to cover the entire cost of that increase for the, for the current fiscal year. So again, we have one point three million available. The policy, our policy three-three oh five requires two percent. And in FY seventeen, our operating budget is thirty million six eight nine two five two. That means we're required to have just shy of six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars kept in the reserve for that purpose. If you look at tonight's school committee report that Bob produced, our projected ending balance is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. And that includes the band purchases plus the increase in healthcare. So that's why we couldn't take a double dip in that, we had to include it all the way at the top. That's part of what we're working off of. In our sixteen seventeen budget, we indicated that we were going to use two hundred thousand dollars available from surplus. So that needs to be accounted for. And that was the school committee town-approved budget two thousand and seventeen, when that, so that happened at the school committee meeting and then the ADR. In addition, we are receiving our final reimbursement amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in this fiscal year for projects that were completed in FY fifteen. And that is the school construction project that we did, all those entryways. That money, however, gets... That money, however, gets automatically placed in the capital project housing aid fund because when we get reimbursement for capital projects, it must be used for additional capital projects. So the money comes in, it goes right to the capital project fund, and it's money that we have available to put towards whatever the next project is that we decide to do, okay? So altogether, if we start with 1.3 million, take out what is required by policy, the 2%, so we have that, but we can't use it because we're, we're required to add that minimum, add in the projected ending balance, so whatever we have left at the end of the year will drop to the bottom line and become part of our unassigned fund balance, take out the $200,000 that we assigned, and then this is just a wash, that leaves us with $654,482 projected at the current time at the end of FY17 that we would have available for use, okay? And that's not including the capital because that's a separate account, so I'll get to that in a moment. So for FY18, again, we're, now we're jumping ahead as we plan and look at what's going to happen next year. Our starting point would be that we have the minimum required balance per policy 3305 because, again, it's in there, we just can't spend it, plus we're expecting $654,482 in unassigned fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, which means our starting point for next year is just shy of 1.3 million. We had some projects that are actually being completed in FY17, that's the generators and the playground that line them, and we are scheduled to receive a reimbursement in FY18 of 60% of the total cost, or approximately $333,000. That money will go right into the capital fund, added to the $160,000 that we're getting this year, and that will put us just shy of $400,000, I think, or $500,000? I have it.
Four hundred ninety-three...
Yeah, $493,000 included on the right hand side. So next year, just based on reimbursement money that is coming in for projects that we've already completed, we're looking at a starting balance for capital projects only of just shy of a half a million dollars, okay? We have also, through a school committee vote, allocated a total of $234,502 back to the towns that you see in my FY18 budget report that keeps changing every time we get new information, and that was separated out to Exeter and West Greenwich based on the FY16 population count, because that was also the school committee vote, so it's recorded separately at the bottom of that sheet that we've been looking at. But because that money has been assigned, it needs to be accounted for. So we also know that we are going to be required, again, to save 2%, except we're projecting that we're going to look for an increase, and again, depending on what gets approved, that will change, okay? But if we, if we use the 31764, which has changed since the time that we worked on this presentation as a result of the governor's money, but whatever we use for the budget, 2% of that has to be reduced, and, and so we're looking at, you know, if we start with the 1.268 million, take out what we have assigned for transportation, take out what we must include in the, what we must maintain in that fund for the 2% minimum, then we'd be looking at starting the year, or FY18, or actually, ending the year in FY18 with $400,000. So unless we decide to do other things in FY18, we have this roughly $400,000 that's sitting there. Again, this is variable, depending on what happens throughout the course of FY17, unexpected things could change, we could have some, an influx of money if tuition kids leave the district or what have you, but we look at those projected ending balances every month. We can continue to update this report. Every time one of these numbers changes, it will impact what we would have available to us in FY18. But I know that we've, we've been having these conversations, and I felt really uncomfortable without having gone through this exercise to really get a good, solid sense of where we stand, and I think this does it for us, kind of takes a look at how decisions in FY16 impact FY17, how decisions and activity in FY17 is projected to impact us in FY18. And then, on the opposite side, I just wanted to keep in mind that we also have $275,000 that's out there, that we have, by school committee vote, committed or assigned?
Assigned.
Assigned to an old debt fund because that's not something that we had started before. So that's out there, and the $493,000 in the capital projects represents the reimbursement amounts that were extracted from the state in this fiscal year and then in next fiscal year for the current year projects. So we know that, at a minimum, when we have conversations about the next projects that we want to engage in, that we have a $500,000 expected amount that we can draw from for those, for that activity in next fiscal year. Okay?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much of this money can be applied to our current budget deficit? Which money? Capital. Put an all stop, complete what's going, and how much of this money can be reassigned? I think some of it has to stay, per the rules of the state, stays capital.
So that $500,000 in capital, I think, has to be capital. But we're looking at $400,000, just shy of $400,000, and again, that could change depending on the activity that happens in FY17, but there's $400,000 projected forward to FY18 that we've not designated for any purpose.
And so that money could essentially be used to help offset the current budget raises?
That's one possibility, but it puts us in a place, if we used it all, it puts us in a place where we have...
We're not in a good place. Yeah, I know, we're not in a good place, so I think it's, we'll have to discuss it more tomorrow, but I think it's something that...
I'd hate to go to towns and ask for money because $400,000 sounded like a, what I'm projecting, it sounds like money, but, and it was 15 years ago when our budget was half this, but now our budget is $32 million.
I understand.
So, you know, we've never had a game, that I'm aware of, where the school had to go back to the town to ask for money.
Correct, and that's why I'm thinking that that $400,000 is going to be applied to our current situation.
No, I was thinking just the opposite because, because if there's something that we build into the operational fund, that $400,000, and something unanticipated comes along, right, and we've already earmarked it for spending, right, we'd have to go back to the town and ask for money, that's...
Or we would draw from the 2% that we're required to maintain for emergency...
That's true.
That's, that's true. But, but you're absolutely right because then the following year, we'd have to build that in because we need to make sure that we have that flexibility in the event of emergencies in the next fiscal year.
Well, yeah, we draw on the surplus.
I'm, I'm just concerned that you never can tell me.
I agree with Bob, I agree with you.
So I'm, I'm just in fear of having to go back to the town for an emergency allocation. You're not even...
But that's what, in my mind, that's where that $600,000 is going to stay.
Which is still not a lot of money.
Correct, it's not. Unfortunately, based upon the state laws and how we're cap, and based on the town's budgets, it's a problem, so... But anyway, we can discuss that tomorrow in more detail, but I think that that's going to wind up having to go, I think unfortunately, that $400,000 is going to have to go to offset, unless we want to cut the hell out of the programs, I'm not in favor of that, so...
When are the generators falling in? This is not counting, they're already...
There's, there are the...
And what about the roofing and the rewiring and all that?
So all that, the, the money for the wiring has already come in, right? The, the generator project and the playground project, in last fiscal year, that showed up all over this report, but that money sits in the capital fund, and it's being expended in this year for, so it's, it's a wash, it's all taken care of, and it, and it has zero impact on FY17 or FY18. It was in the fund, and it would be exited from the fund based on the expenses for the...
...of agreement to do that five-year capital plan, and I'll just, that said, once a district has issued, has executed MOA, which that was our memorandum of agreement that we were going to do these projects, the municipal, the district or municipality can decide how to prioritize those projects. So we did the generator and the playground, now we have the balance of, of the projects to do, and I think that's what the building committee needs to look at. You know, I think the, that amount, I was, I was happy with the $493 because that will help us to move the ball forward. This is the money shot, though. As you know, the school construction regs require the district to complete 50% or $1,355,000 of the approved amount between May 17, 2016, and June 30, 2021. So we're halfway there practically, we did 551, we'll do another 400. 2021 sounds like a long way away, but it's not. And then here's the second part of the money shot. Please note that EWG approval does not include any bond-funded projects. The district would need to seek a new approval for any bond-funded projects to be eligible for reimbursement. So that idea that we've kind of talked about a little bit, Lucy is saying, you know, when's the time where we look at maybe going to bond, that would, no matter where we do it on the continuum, whether at, before 2021 or post-2021, if we opt to go to bond, then it's, then it's a whole other process.
Did you say that our debt, our bond debt deduction makes this, this year that we're talking about today, goes down by $4 million dollars? Did I hear that?
2018 is our final payment for the $3.5 million.
But what does go down for 1718? Is that what you were thinking? So 1718, we're paying on a bond, paying the pay down. How much is the pay down between this fiscal budget and...
And next year, I don't have it in front of me, but...
I have it.
Actually, it's...
Yeah, it's right on that sheet.
It went down by like...
We, for 2017 to 2018, we drop about $8,000, but then in 2019, we drop $188,000, plus a little bit more on the other side.
So are you going to have much relief in 1718?
No, no.
Oh, we get a lot?
Well, what I'm saying is, what I was thinking, and, you know, to Bob's point in there, I mean, there's nothing, with the bond going away, if we postpone that and spend it for a little while, we still have a little bit of time, we can utilize that to get us out of our current jam, we can always go back to bond to finish things, you know, and pay for it over time, we have to get approvals, but it's something we could consider, just worry about that for next year. Well, yeah, and that's what I'm hoping for right now, getting to next year.
And did you just say that bond means that it doesn't classify it as reimbursement? Is that what you meant?
No, the, no, it just means that if, if at any point going forward, we decide to go to bond, the district opts to say, you know what, we're going to tackle much more bigger projects, and we're going to seek funding through the bond, through a bond authorization, that that process would essentially, the desire to do that would put us through the whole school building authority process again, which is a four-stage process, which we just completed like a year and a half ago. It's kind of lengthy, a little bit more expensive than anybody would like it to be, but it's part of the regulations for the edification of everybody, including the superintendent. Because he's my boss. The, I have requested from, from Rybeck and the bonding company, a restatement of the schedule of payments because I sense that they're actually lower than what, what is currently on the sheet, which is a good thing for us, but coming out of our meeting last week, I just wanted to double-check in there pulling that information, so I expect that any day. But we walk with good news and we run with bad news, so I'm walking with the good news, but you should have it tomorrow night.
So from that refinance, do you think this is $750,000?
No, there is, that's why you walk with the good news, it's, you know, by the time you get there, it's just like, it wasn't really, it didn't work out as well as we thought, but you run with the bad.
That's from that refinance, that we last...
Yeah, from the refinancing, and so I think that it, I think that there is a, a bigger decrease in the debt service in year one and two, but I just want to make sure. So they're going, I asked them to actually reissue the, the schedule of statements to us.
Okay, I'm finished business. Do we have anything to that, from the reserve capital project company?
So, capital project, Ballroom is complete, so the generator's in place, it's all wired in, the annunciator for the fire departments is in place, six of their folks, town side, did all their inspection, now it's having the general contractor come out and do the load testing. The, the fly-in appointment is the junior senior high school, and that is scheduled for the February, the first weekend during the February shutdown, during the winter break in February. We are very concerned about shutting the building down for three days during February. Steve is very, very concerned. Additionally, we are going to be in the thick of the budget, and that will terminate all sorts of activity at the admin building, which will take away our internet, our access to servers. We have costed our backup generators, cost prohibitive, it's, it's just not even worth it. So I'm working with Torado and with the GC to see if they can do it, vacation in April, if that's the will of the school committee. I think it makes sense, there's a whole other layer, which, there are 80 AAU basketball games scheduled during February vacation, probably half of them in this building alone, so we would have to send those people packing.
That's one way to sort of off the entire...
So that might get a lot of the parents upset.
Why is it going to take three days if the building's going to be shut down without power? It shouldn't take long if everything's in place to turn the power off, make the connection, turn the power back on.
Yeah.
We don't, we, we did, we put a code generator, one megawatt code generator, and it was less than a day that the plant was without power. It wasn't a three-day period, it was shut off, the connections were made, it was turned back on within hours.
I can just tell you that it was a six-hour job at Ballroom, and they started at seven, and they left at six that night.
Doesn't make any sense.
So, yeah, I...
I would ask that question. I, I would, you know, I ask that question because I don't see the need for the building to be without power. If they plan it correctly, the building shouldn't be without power for more than a few hours. They should be, everything should be in place, they just need to shut everything down, make the connections, and turn it back on. And then if they want to play with the generator, of course, you automatically transfer, which kicks in, so...
Right.
Or they can cycle it so that it doesn't, so they can test the generator independently of the building. Something sounds awfully fishy about turning the building off for three days.
That's us saying three days.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not disagreeing, but I've seen, you know, it's the, you know, the closer you get, the longer it takes, the further away you are, the less time it takes, you know, and, and that was going to take five hours on Saturday, and it took them twice as long. On this one, they're saying a day, and I just, you know, maybe we can ask them if they'll agree to a guarantee...
The only reason why the power has to come down is to put the feeds in through a different, through the transfer switch, that's, that's the only reason why the power has to come down. If everything is in place, it's not going to take long.
I'll keep you guys posted. I'm, I'm still working on it with them, you know, I...
I mean, six, seven hours sounds excessive for a wall.
They had one guy.
Well, maybe you can say I have more than one guy.
And that transfer switch was inside.
Yeah, this is...
This is going to be outside.
It's five times the size.
And that copper is, I mean, you know what I'm talking about.
I was...
He was honest, I mean, Steve was there helping him pull the cable through, trying to, you know, muscle that thing in. I was just upset they took the scrap, because that copper is awfully shiny when it's... Take it out, take it out. My first question to Steve, do we get to keep the scrap? He goes, no, we don't get to.
Just keep it, Bob, you don't have any bail money.
So, that's to be...
Everybody's good? Uh, reports and comments? All right, well, we're going to see each other, each other again tomorrow night for our budget workshop. Um, Thursday, February 9th, we have a joint meeting of the towns. Tuesday, February 14th, we have a school committee meeting, you all make your 9-day plans for here. And Tuesday, February 20th, we have our school committee meeting and the budget adoption. So we're not going into executive session, we're going to make a vote in Twitter.
Okay, sure.